All right, I'd like to call the meeting to your order. The East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors, the AM meeting this Thursday, July 6th, 2023. I want to remind everybody, recording device will be in use during the meeting. And opening the meeting with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
My pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America. And to the republic we're just standing, one nation, indivisible, indivisible in justice for all. The public comment for agenda items, I want to remind everybody, the rules for conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2001-08. That the time allocated to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Carl, I know you're here to make a presentation. It's not an agenda item, so at the end of the meeting, I will give you more than three minutes. Okay, minutes of the previous meeting, Board of Supervisors, meeting minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the June 15th, 2023 PM regular session meeting minutes.
I will second it with the comment that, is this the appropriate time to make the comment? That in the, in those minutes, it records that I voted in favor of paying all the authorized bills. And I neglected to remember that one of the checks was made out to me to reimburse myself for attendance of the supervisors' conference back in April, check number 29219. I now wish to put on public record that I abstained from voting on approving that check.
I actually didn't sign it.
Pardon me?
Yeah, you didn't sign it.
I know I didn't sign, missed it.
I know.
Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Authorization to pay bills and approve payroll.
I'm making motion to authorize to pay bills and approve payroll as presented.
And I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under old business, I see nothing listed. And under new business, I see nothing listed. Under subdivision and zoning applications, I also see nothing issued. And under ordinances and resolution for consideration, again, I see nothing listed. And under public comment on non-agenda items. Carl, this would be you. Will you please use the speaker?
Or do we? Which panel I have?
I'm not going to put a limit, but as long as you're not repeating yourself and try to stick to the point.
I do stutter and sometimes I forget.
We won't count the stutters.
Maybe go to the podium where there's a microphone.
Okay, may I bring this forward so you can see the pictures?
Sure, but you have to stand at the microphone and talk into the little green button.
Yes, right, push the green button.
Nope, it's not.
Right.
Good.
I don't know what I'm going to say, but I'll try to keep it brief. If I have to stand here and...
You don't have to push the button, you can just stand there and talk.
Okay. Okay. Going, going back 17 years ago, we talked about the same subject of purchasing the land at Lindell. And at that time, Chuck McBride owned the property. We, we had, we had an appraisal done at that time, which was paid for by area residents. And they appraised the property at $392,000 back then. In the meantime, well, it never worked out because Chuck won $400,000. And then he jumped out because it was going to be his retirement, and he went to $600,000. At that point, it really knocked it out of the ballpark. And so essentially, it was dropped. We were working through Park and Rec, we were working through open space. Open space, it's questionable whether it's appropriate to use open space funds for this. But at the time, we talked about fees and lieu from developers where they would, you know, choose to not provide maybe hiking trails or build a park in their development so they could pay to the township a fee. Now, that's the way I kind of understand it. I may not have it right, completely right, but I do my best. And, and so, years went by. Chuck kept the property because he basically loved it, I think. And eventually, he sold it for $230,000. It's a shame that it went that way, but it was quite a loss to him from the possible $392,000 they might have gone. The greenhouses have been there for a long time. And I remember that my son worked there for Chuck. And he'd ride his bicycle down from North Custer Eastville Road and worked the summer there. My son is 52. Time goes by, it's been, like I said, 17 years. I don't feel a day older, frankly. But anyway, well, let's step back a little bit. The person who purchased the property, name is Mark Dewey. He has offices over in Yaw Springs. He's also a philanthropist and gave a lot of money, millions of dollars, for the Dewey Science Center at Westchester University. So, I think it was $12 million they gave. So when I first started speaking with him, it seemed as though perhaps that he would be philanthropic, is that the word? And, and maybe we gave for $200,000. His real estate agent in the meantime told me that he, he's retiring and he needs to make a profit. Would seem like a couple hundred thousand dollars would be absolutely nothing. At any rate, we're, we're working on this concept. In the meantime, the trucking firm moved in about a year ago into the adjacent two acres. I need the podium for a moment. Trucking firm, is that right? What it, a year ago. An entrance to Chuck's green house. Over Sedron that runs through us, this is the... Park, July. Park, we can get up to... Up cycles, elevate. Questions about the inspection. First years of that, here's the partial. Partial is, is... Places for greenhouses.
Is it one a parcel or two parcels?
It's actually two parcels.
Okay, because we're looking at the map up there, okay.
There's a question about the parcel I see in some maps, it's one acre, I see. Eight trucks here, high axle trucks, typically 22 tons of stone. 22 tons of stone, 44,000 pounds of stone. Throw on a road, just have them... Ape, it's lovely, I don't know what happens to it, you know, after a lot of wear and tear from the trucks. The trucks, which is a Cali Trucking Company out of Coatesville, has, had... Has, is on notice of not being in compliance of the village commercial. And, and I think it's kind of obvious that if, if you think of Lindell, it's like a hamlet rather than a village. It has a post office, doesn't have a store anymore, but it's, it's a nice little hamlet. It's, it's beautiful area. It sits along the East Brandywine Creek with Culberson Run coming into it. And, and it's just across the street from where Struble Trail will come up on the other side of the creek. It's not an ideal spot for a park because it would be nice if it was across the street or the trail was across the street, but we're not going to move the railroad bed. And so, I have spoken with the county about this. I've spoken with Brandywine Conservancy about this. Brandywine said, we'll be glad to help you write for grants, there should be grant money available. The county said that they'd be interested, but they wanted to hear from, you know, what Park and Rec thought about it. We meet with Park and Rec on Monday evening, the 10th, at seven o'clock. We will have a few people there if you would like to come. The, you know, the proceedings at that time. I think there may be a hundred or so people that will come to the meeting. I've been canvassing the neighborhood and have had no negative feedback from any of the people in the neighborhood. They're all in favor of the park. And as, as I said, this is deja vu. We've done it before, and now here we are doing it again 17 years later. The property has not improved, you know, in the 17 years because Chuck had retired before, for that time, and that's why he was selling the property. It turned out, the reason that he did that is that the oil bills were more expensive than what he could sell his flowers for. And since he had to heal those greenhouses, to understand how, which just have a single pane of glass or, or polyethylene plastic everywhere. So, it was, wasn't a good business, it was, I guess, for a while. He was not the first person. His father had before him and another family. I think there were two other families that had the greenhouses over a period of time. And it's interesting, I spoke with Sandy Lamy, as you know, chairman of the Park and Rec, and she said that she had worked there at the greenhouses at one time. And that's great, you know? It's great to get kids out and doing, doing something. So, I, I worry about one factor, maybe, maybe more than that, but the one that stands out highest in my mind, foremost, is, is that there may be some environmental concerns. It was a greenhouse for a long time. Greenhouses probably use pesticides, insecticides, fungicides, whatever, and there may be some residual chemicals on the property. The other thing is the oil tank, which is a 1,000 gallon tank. Believe it's in the ground, and we don't, it's old, it was old then, didn't get younger. So, that's a concern. A phase one may, may be needed, maybe a phase two. I'm, I'm trying to find that out from DEP or whoever would be the controlling agency as to whether it has ever been addressed before, if they have anything on record. I will try to do that, and I will give you the honest answer. Because if I found out that it's trying to cost us a lot of money to do that, I would withdraw my support of the township purchasing the property. But with, of course, no consultation with yourselves. So, at this point, I know that from the realtor, at Cali Trucking, Cali, has made an offer on the greenhouse property, 3.6 acres, and they have offered them $405,000 for the, for the property. I think, Mr. Dewey, we'd like to get $450,000, and that would make them a nice profit from the $230,000 they paid for it. And, but now that the notice is going out to Cali Trucking, it could be that they will maybe lose interest in, in going further with the, the offer. I don't know that. It's only probably yesterday that Cali Trucking got the notice of being in violation, not only of the village commercial, but also of having spread gravel, which is stone all over the whole area, from property line to property line without exception. It goes back quite far, it's a narrow strip, it used to be an old McClure woolen mill. Goes back, it's two, two acres, and it's a slender property. So, they have made the offer. You know, time is precious, and I'm afraid that somebody's going to come along and, and want that property. Pook and Poop, which is now in the old barn, was interested, and they made an offer. And after they thought about it, and after looked at what, I guess, Ida did. And Ida came down as a torrent storm and flooded downtown. We have a little mill up the creek at, at Devereaux Road. It even flooded inside the mill about five inches. It peaked in the middle of the night, and so it came down like nothing at six o'clock, and I went home from the mill. And it was in the middle of the night, it peaked, dropped down. When I went back to the mill the next morning, I looked around, oh, I'm unscathed. I looked around the basement, it looked okay. And then I see my, I had some cans on the floor, and they had duts and bolts in, and they were all filled with water. Water came in at least five inches. And if you, you know the property, it's where the steel bridge goes across the Devereaux. You know that's a pretty big, there's eight acres that we own, we own on both sides of the creek. I would say that six of it floods. But it's a small watershed, and so a day or two, the water's gone. And the soil is very permeable, and a day or two, I can go out and mow the, mow the lawn there. Though, anyway, that said about Ida, you know, these storms are going to be coming. I think they just declared that...
I'd like to leave some time for questions, so...
Yes, sir.
We, if, if we could move on to that, anybody else have any questions before I ask mine? So you're asking us to, you're making a presentation to consider what the township might do to purchase that 3.6 acres? Using whatever method, if any, that might be appropriate. But my questions to you from a basis of the township is, you mentioned, you mentioned that you were trying to get hold of the DPA, and I think that was the DEP. I think that's a good thing to do because I know, in fact, you can check with Bruce Rollins years ago, he could not purchase that property because of environmental issues. The, the lending companies would not lend against it because of the... So, he was well past the phase one, and he was until phase two. And I, I don't know about Pook and Poop, but that might have had some consideration there too, so I think you need to spend some time looking into the potential hazardous waste issues. And the oil tank, those possibly can be solved, but, solved, but that's not inexpensive. And have you, do you have any estimate of demolition costs of the actual greenhouse?
Well, the greenhouses themselves, I think, are, are fairly simple. They only have a knee wall, the flooring inside is gravel because they want water to penetrate down into the soil for when they wear the plants. And, and, and third, they, they may be cinder block versus concrete block, or they may be concrete block. I think the demolition of those greenhouses is simple. The, the house itself, there's two, two buildings, they have two tenants in there. One lives in a trailer which would be just towed out. The other one is, the garages, there's three or four garages there, and there's a person living over there, that, which is where Chuck, of course, lived. That would be a little bit more. There's also, I believe, a barn of sorts and maybe some other buildings. I think he had, there was maybe a smoke stack or something that was required to remove at one time, and I think that's gone. So, I have no solid estimate as to what, but I would suggest that I hold here a Bondsville Mill Park, 10 years of volunteer. And, and I'd like to just pass that around for your, to look at for a moment.
If you don't mind, why don't you start with the members of the board?
And when I actually look through that book, you'll, you'll go from front to back, and you'll see the degradation of the building, and they were huge, huge... And there were four of us who included big and slate... Oh, it names right now. By anybody, there were four of us that, that... The rocky stone has continued along from there, in what we call building, building that we did. It was 20 feet long.
So, I think a lot can be done with volunteer effort out there, but required... But, so, I'll give this one, I'll be 85.
All right.
Almost out.
All right, well, I, I think the proper route you've already signed up for, and that's to go to the Park and Recreation. And, and, and see that, the... Right.
I appreciate your time, but I don't mean... Put it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I, I already attend the meetings, so...
How's it going, Tom?
Thank you.
So, the other thought is, maybe you could warm up out there.
There's invitations in our package.
Open space, the...
Our, our, our efficient township staff has already included your invitation in our supervisor's packets.
Oh, great.
So you can stay on. So you save that.
The other thought was, these, these are moved, as I mentioned...
I, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Carl. While there's, everybody in the room can hear you. We are recording this, and the people might be interested in watching at home, and they need to hear you in the microphone.
Yes. Okay, I mentioned these, and the other source of money was open space money. I, I ask you to listen for a moment longer. I believe the money was borrowed by the township using open space money with the idea that it would be paid back. I mention this because, you know, at any moment, somebody else says, "I'll take the property." Did they do due diligence? I have no idea. Maybe Mr. Dewey did not do due diligence when, when he bought it. But I think he was thinking of growing things there. It's a little bit of a stretch, but maybe he had other reasons, sons or daughters might have wanted to get into the business. I, I don't know. I'm not privy to that. So, I would really like to ask, because I don't know where that property's going to go if the township doesn't do something and take it. The property, including the, the trucking, where the trucks are, spans from High Spire Road to Little Washington Lindell Road, which is quite a distance. I think we really need to do, and maybe this is the major point, we really need to do something for the community. Or so, than the park. The park can be worked out, I believe. What it would be used for, anything. Well, maybe it's a science park because it has wear falling through it. It could do wear, little wear wheels and things like that. Just an idea to throw out something that might be a little bit different than, than just swings and sliding boards and things, which, of course, could also be included. And maybe a picnic table or, or a few of that. They, they do have electric on site. They do have a questionable septic system. I think there's a septic tank, but maybe no field, which probably is, may as well not even mention. And, I say electricity, and they have a well. So, water and electric is probably what we could count on getting out of it. I think I've spoken long enough. I appreciate your attention. I would ask for your kind consideration of doing this. I hope you can come to see the interest of the community in this. And I would ask to be on the agenda at a future date, maybe the next time. Maybe I can come back with more information on whether we need a phase one or phase two or what Bruce Rollins has found out in the past. And, you know, when you say that, I kind of, kind of remember something like that, maybe...
Right, we were all on the open space committee back then. We were all on the, the open space committee, and that was what his hangup was. And quite frankly, the township can't even consider purchasing a hazardous waste site.
No, I, I think we need to establish...
I think our solicitor would have...
We need to establish that it is a hazardous.
Right, that's, I think that's your most important thing to do.
I went through my notes last night at three o'clock. And I pulled up a little note that I had with, with Chuck at the time. And, and he told me that it was a number six oil, which is a very thick oil. It could be that if it was number six oil, and I assume that he, he knew and he told me the truth, that, that if it is very viscous, it may not have spread or permeated very far into the soil, surrounding soil. As I said, it's a thousand gallon tank, according to Chuck. And I think maybe what I need to do is, is to talk with Mr. Dewey because they have not really revealed much to me, anything to me, other than the price. And, and see what he has found out. And Pook and Poo, you know, I spoke with Julie. And she's been very helpful and forthcoming with information about the property. And between the flooding and, and the question about the septic and, and the oil, I guess it was enough to make them decide to go across the road up the hill and out the wear situation. So, she's, they're going to have a nice thing.
Okay, we thank you.
And I thank you for, for putting up with my chatter here. By the way, I don't know how many of you know Deacon. Deacon and Lee spent thousands of hours, as we did, working on Bonneville Mill. His brother Bill died on Saturday, last Saturday. And they will have a service Friday the seventh. It's a seven, seven, seven. Friday the seventh, seventh month, seventh day, seventh hour, seven o'clock at night. Any of you know Deacon and Bill?
All right, thank you. I want to move on to the rest of the meeting. Under notices, there was an executive session held on June sixteenth to discuss personnel matters. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.